And all the hard work that our schools are doing in our community. We're super proud of them. I'm Jen Daniels. I'm the mayor of Gilbert. And we have councilmember Taylor. We have council-- uh, vice mayor, sorry. I demoted him. Vice Mayor Cook.
You always pick on me, all the time.
No, not true. Okay. Councilmember Anderson and councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Ray is traveling for business and he's gonna join us by phone. And councilmember Yentes is as well. So we will have everybody on the phone for our votes tonight. But for this part, you just get the five of us. We 100% love our teachers. I have four of my own kids in our schools. And I say prayers for our teachers every single day for all the hard work that they're doing. We'd love to acknowledge the teachers that are here today and staff and administrators who do so much for our community. The number one reason people still choose Gilbert is because of our school system. And it's not lost on us that we're a successful community because of them. So will our teachers, administrators, and staff please stand so we can recognize you? Or wave if you're in the back. It's not-- it's amazing to me how many teachers come to this event. Because this is not part of their written, listed, daily duties. This is above and beyond, so thank you. Can I get a helper? Yes, you. You were excited to help. Come help me. Up top. Awesome. Tell us your name.
Lamar.
Lamar, how are you today? What grade are you in?
Second.
Lamar's in second grade. Lamar, in this bucket right here, we have a list or all the teachers that submitted, like they had to take their time, right? To submit their applications. And so we put all their names on a piece of paper. Will you pick one? Because Culinary Dropout donated a $100 gift card. And we want to make sure one of the teachers gets it. Okay. So help us know which teacher it is. And if you don't pick your own, it's okay. They'll still like you. Is Mr. Swint from Riggs Elementary here? Mr. Swint? Well, that's your teacher. Awesome. We'll make sure this gets to Mr. Swint. Thank you so much. Thank you for your help, Lamar. You rocked it. We also want to acknowledge Sal's Gilbert Pizza. Because in the envelope that the kids will get today, there is a gift certificate for Sal's Gilbert Pizza. They're an incredible community partner and right across the street here from Town Hall. And they put pasta on top of pizza, which is like genius, if you ask me. So we love them. And we do this in three groups. And we do it really efficiently. And so which one of our team members is doing pictures today? Do we have somebody from digital doing pictures? Okay, we're gonna find that out real fast. Amy, can you find out who from digital's coming down to do pictures? Okay, thanks. Amy will save the day. But we do this in three groups. So the first and second groups are both our elementary school kids. And then the third group is our junior high and high school kids. So if you are our student citizen of the month and your school is anywhere from Ashland Ranch Elementary to Islands Elementary, so in between A and I, will you please come on down? And we'll have you stand up here with councilmember Taylor. All right. So the way that this will work is-- She's okay. If she wants to stand with you, we'll call her up when it's time. The way this will work is I'm gonna stand here and take a picture with the students. And so if you wanted to come down and take a picture when your student gets called, you're gonna come right around this area, if that works. And I think we should maybe take care of this beautiful young girl first.
Well, if we wait just a little bit--
Oh.
--our photographer--
Is coming down?
--is coming down. So if you could tell a joke or--
I have no jokes.
Something funny.
Sometimes being the mayor is the joke, actually. No, I'm just kidding. It's the best job in the world and I love it.
Why don't you talk about our grand opening of our park on Saturday?
Yeah, that's a great idea. So many of you have probably heard that Gilbert Regional Park is celebrating finally the opening. And I got a little preview of it last night and got to go visit this morning to do some media. And it was absolutely amazing. So that's on Higley and Queen Creek Road. So we're gonna do a big ribbon cutting tomorrow morning-- excuse me, Saturday morning. And there'll be a big fun opening with some freebies and giveaways. And then Saturday night, we're having a glow party from, I think, six to nine or seven to 10. One of those timeframes. It's on our website. And so that'll be a really fun way to celebrate and kick off our brand-new park. 30 acres of the 272 acres is done. That's phase one. But it's nothing like anything you've seen in Gilbert and has a splash pad and a giant playground. And when I say giant, I mean, I couldn't find one of my kids last night for a solid hour. So I can vouch for the size. Good? Who's coming, Amy? Lauren is--
Lauren is on her way.
Sorry to keep you waiting. There must have been some confusion about the time of when it started. This is the first time that's happened.
I know. We want to make sure we get everybody's pictures.
I know. We'll wait patiently.
Mayor, can you sing?
I can't sing. I can lip sync really good, but-- Does anybody have any questions about Gilbert maybe we could answer? We'll make it an open forum for feedback to the town council.
Stop the council. Stop the audience, Mayor. What's in the water tower?
Okay, yeah, we'll ask Gilbert trivia. Next year Gilbert celebrates a big birthday. What is it? How old is Gilbert next year? It's a big birthday. We are 100 years old next year. We're celebrating our centennial. All right. Last piece of trivia, because Lauren just got here. What is in the water tower? I know, it sounds like a trick question, but it's not. It's not water. Someone said it. Sand, that's right. Oh, she's been paying attention to Gilbert trivia, so that's awesome. All right, Lauren's here for photos. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Kate Yandel. And parents, you can come down to the front if you want to take a picture right up here. From Bridges Elementary, Alicia Garcia. Alicia? All right, from Burke Elementary, I'm hoping I'm getting this right, Julian Hernandez Nunes. From Carol Ray Ranch Elementary-- Very handsome. Yeah, there you go. From EduPrize School, Azie Lynn Bridwell. Azie Lynn? Oh, okay. Azie Lynn. From Gateway Point Elementary, Sarah Hales. From Highland Park Elementary, Dallin Steiny Prius. Price? Excuse me, Price. Steiny Price.
All right, that is all of Group One. Group Two, now you know how to do it. So that's the rest of our elementary school students. We can have you come down. And we also know that it's a school night. So if after your child gets their award and we do the group picture, if you would like to leave, you are welcome to leave. And it's a good opportunity to do a quick change. So anybody that's in the back that still needs a seat, there will be some open seats as well. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
And again, parents that are standing, there's plenty of seats toward the front. Kaii. You know they call it, it's not Kaii? I think it's Kaii. Kai. Okay. Kai-Lani, yeah. I'm with you. From Neely Traditional Academy, Lily Wetzel. I'm very sorry. That's, for some reason, that's not how it's spelled. Kai-Lani. From Pioneer Elementary, Kendall Heinz. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Jaden Zandlouski. Zandlouski. Okay, I thought I got it. From Town Meadows-- excuse me. Okay, from Val-- in our last elementary school for Group Two, from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Audrey Anne Pierre.
I know. I know. She's so little. She is. If you took your heels off, Mayor.
Good job, Audrey.
From Greenfield Junior High, Caleb Bradley. From Greenfield Junior High, Caleb Bradley. From Highland High School, Ashley Catchpole. Alright, from Higley High School, Benjamin Tyler Wood. I think we should be going to Higley here, Mayor. From Muskeet Junior High School, Aria Nagiri. From Payne Junior High, Mackenzie Graham. From Perry High School, Diana Garza. From Perry High School, Taylor Dale. From Sausaman Middle School, Philip Kent. And Mayor, our last school for Group Three, from South Valley Junior High, Nathan Kirby.
Alright, that concludes our program for the Student Citizen of the Month. We will start the business portion of our meeting in just a couple minutes, so thank you all for coming and have a great day.
Is this like a screensaver where everybody's gonna see what they're doing or something?
Um, yes, unfortunately.
We do it for planning commission, nobody stays the same and you can't see what's on the cloud.
Oh, yes. Um, there is a feature. This one though. Yeah, if you just want to.
Yeah, let me just load it in here real quick, just in case.
Yeah, it looks like you can't see it.
That's good.
Until we can.
Thank you. What do you, yeah. No, it's not projected. You know, it didn't save from the, are you, you guys? Do you know, do you know how to, I know how to do it with my, oh, maybe I can do it with my mouse. I just want to make all these smaller. There we go, like this. Because I had earlier, it moved, like, tons of stuff, like, all the way to the back, right? To, so, just in case I have to present, I don't have to show eighty frickin' million slides, and then when I saved it, it didn't, didn't save. I wonder if you could select all these at once? I don't even do that, man, instead of having to click on them all and thing. Because I had moved them all to the back. I know, man. I did this earlier and it somehow wouldn't save. You gotta try, didn't notice there's not too many of them. All stacked. Okay, now I can take them and just move them to wherever I want them. There, drop, there we go. I did this earlier and it didn't work. I mean, it worked and I thought it saved, but, oh well, huh? Okay, there we go. I have no clue. We'll see. Okay. That's cool, I'll just minimize this one, grab them down. Oh, sorry, excuse me, thank you.
Thank you, welcome, sorry there was a couple housekeeping things, and for those of you that got to see the tail end of the Student Citizen of the Month program, that's one of our favorites in Gilbert. We're equally as fortunate tonight to have Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts here, grateful that you guys are all here, I think they're just called Scouts now. So, yes, Scouts are here. Okay, I'll do it right, Scouts BSA, I'm gonna change my agenda. Vice Mayor, will you assist?
Well, Mayor, we are privileged to have Hadley lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we can all stand here in the chamber. And Hadley, this is all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let's have a round of applause for our Scouts. What we'd like to do is pass the mic down, so if you can just say your name and what troop you're in. Oh, your rank? Your name and your rank. And then I have a special gift on behalf of the council to give each of you.
My name is Lizzie and I'm in second class.
My name is Daphne and I'm Tenderfoot.
My name's Jillian and I'm Scout.
My name's Hadley and I'm Scout.
My name's Brenda and I'm the Scout Master.
My name's Melanie and I'm second class.
My name's Megan and I'm first class.
Brian Committee Chairman.
My name's Caleb and I'm Star.
My name is Jackson and I'm Star.
My name's Carson and I'm Life.
My name's Payan and I'm in second class.
My name's Chris and I'm Scout Master.
My name's Andrew and my rank is Tenderfoot.
I'm Travers and I'm a Tenderfoot.
I'm Andon and I'm a Life.
I'm Jacob and I'm a Life.
My name is Kent Pace and I'm the Scout Master.
Well, thank you. Can we have another round of applause for our Scouts? The, the gift that you received is a pocket constitution. And this is obviously probably the most important document that we have here in the United States that we follow here in the country, so. You have an assignment, you have to read every single page, and when you come back next time, we quiz you. Is that alright? Again, thank you for coming, we appreciate it, and we appreciate your time here with us, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here. On another note, this past Tuesday was Constitution Day, which was an exciting day for our community, we celebrate lots of history through that, and our town attorney is clapping, so, our town attorney loves the Constitution as well. Thank you, Nancy. Alright, that moves us to the invocation tonight, and the invocation will be offered by, you're gonna have to tell me your name, are you from Redeemer?
Yes, I am.
Awesome, terrific, thank you for being here, and if you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Mike, thank you very much, please pray with me. Father, you are gracious to us, you are merciful, slow to anger and abounding in steadfast love, and from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. Lord, we thank you that we can be here tonight, we thank you for every single person who is here, and how precious they are to you. Lord, this is so important to come together tonight, we know that you are the one who appoints leaders, and Lord, you have appointed each and every leader here tonight. Lord, would we be a town that submits to that leadership? Lord, would you please bless them, would you give them wisdom this evening as they have different decisions to make? Lord, please help them to seek to make decisions that are pleasing to you and obedient to your word. Lord, we thank you for those who serve in our town, we thank you for the firefighters, we thank you for the police officers, for the EMT, for emergency personnel. Lord, we thank you for our schools and for our teachers and our students, please keep them safe. Lord, please be here tonight, help us as we deal with things that will come up, Lord, things that might be difficult to deal with, Lord, please help these leaders to make good choices tonight that are pleasing to you, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Amy Yentis. Aquorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. We have one proclamation this evening, and I'd just like to read one portion of it from here on the dais, we're not presenting this to anyone, but we do feel like it's a really important component, and something we all need to be aware of in our community, we are declaring October 7th through the 14th, 2019, as Mental Illness Awareness Week, and we know that this is something that affects every family and every member of our community in some form or fashion, and so we like to just note a couple of these statistics here, it says fifty percent of individuals with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment, and feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many living with mental illness from seeking help. And untreated mental illness leads to higher rates of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, and suicides. And stigma leads to fear, mistrust, and violence against people with mental illness who are significantly more likely to be victims than perpetrators of violent crimes. And a greater public awareness about mental wellness can positively transform our community, can transform our attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, and make it easier for our citizens to seek help. And so, I, as the Mayor of the Town at Gilbert, and on behalf of the Town Council, do declare October 7th through the 14th as Mental Illness Awareness Week, and just encourage everyone to have candid conversations with their loved ones and with their family, and also to ensure that our youth understand some of these things that might be occurring within our community, I think having conversations and talking about these things openly and with candor and honesty can make a big difference in the lives of so many who suffer from mental illness, so thank you all, and I will set this proclamation aside, thank you. Do you have one communications from citizens tonight, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, we'd like to invite Joe Guusik to the podium, Joe, if you could state your name for the record and place a residence, and we'll have you, we'll give you three minutes, that's before, thank you, sir.
Joe Guusik, Gilbert resident. Mayor Daniels, fellow Town Council members, all Gilbert staff, residents of our beautiful community, as well as guests, my name's Joe Guusik, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American, I'm the education Lorax. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for continuing to do the Student of the Month, which I also consider that the way to say thank you to a teacher. From my understanding, I don't think we really know exactly how many years we've been doing it, but I believe it's about thirty, so thank you for doing it, and I encourage you to continue to do it. I come here tonight to tell you about a gentleman named Tim Taylor. He's actually gonna be a candidate out of LD-18 as a Republican, out of the Republican Party. His number one priority is education, and this is what he's put on his website. Educating our children is the most important duty, and funding it publicly is a duty shared by the people. The founding fathers agree, John Adams said, "The whole people must take upon themselves the education of the whole people and be willing to bear the expense of it." There should not be a district of one mile square without a school in it, not founded by a charitable individual, but maintained at the public expense of the people themselves. On this given year, there are many different, you might want to start that clock. The clock hasn't even started.
Maybe, maybe you get a free one tonight.
Alright, I'm not gonna speak all night, I gotta go to an LD-16 meeting, sorry. Thank you for starting that. We have many different things that are on, this is an off-year for an election, but on, there will be a ballot for our Gilbert Public Schools, our Higley Schools, and Chandler School District. Those are the three districts that make us, make up our, make up our town, and there's other communities that have this coming as well. As I advocate for all the different choices from the charters where they work with the Arizona Commerce Authority to obtain education revenue bonds under the Arizona Industrial Development Authority, I think that's important to support. I am never gonna ask anybody to say, to tell somebody to tell them how to vote, but I'll tell you how I'm gonna vote. For each and every one of them, I would vote yes, in each and every category that they do. I thank the, the Town Council members who have chose to speak up and say to the community how they're voting, but I'm gonna ask you to do one thing, don't tell the community how to vote, ask them, just like that quote said, "It is each individual's responsibility." Ask them to go to each school's website, review the information, and have them make the decision for what they think is best. the decision for what they think is best. Now, at the end of the day, really, I want to share just a little bit of information from the state. In the JBLC report that just came out recently in August, even though we've had a record amount of kids in our school system, even though we've put a record amount of funding into our schools, we actually lost to inflation. Last year, we were 87% of inflation. This year, we were 86% of inflation. So you know what that number is from the local, the state, and the federal level, and that is all of us who make that bill? That's almost $2 billion short. So I just simply want to tell everybody to take the time this year to see that that ballot's coming to their home, take the time to learn about it. And once again, I thank you for supporting education. I know we all have different points of view. I know we'll get where we need to get to, and I thank you for everything that you do. So now I'm going to go chase a couple state-elected officials in the LD16 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. That moves us to our consent agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to poll Agenda Item 23B and vote that on separately, and I will motion on how we will vote on 23B. We're going to poll Agenda Item 12, 24, and 25. And with that, if you can bear with me, I move that we approve Agenda Items 2, 3, 3A, 4A, 4B, 5 through 11, 13 to 23, with 23A, 23C, 23D, and Agenda Items 26, 27, and 28.
Just to confirm, that included Agenda Item 4?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda Item 4, yes.
Third second. We have a second by Councilmember Taylor. Please vote. Do you want us to vote again? That motion carries with Councilmembers' raised voice vote at a 6 and 0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to...
12, and then Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Mayor, Item 12, federal grant on a good project, definitely support it, would like to see it locally funded. I've talked about trying to back off some of the federal funds, just wanted to vote on this separately. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we approve Agenda Item 12.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Do you need us to vote again? That motion carries with a 5-1 vote, because you're going to make me do lots of math tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor with 20, Agenda Item 24.
Mayor, Council, Council Agenda Item 24 is referencing a resolution of East Valley. I'm not sure exactly who's going to be at the table. You can clarify that. Certainly support the collaboration of that. There seemed to be a little bit of an emphasis on low-income housing as a solution. To me, this is an absolutely important thing to talk about. It's this topic of homelessness, and how do we address this specifically? And I'm really glad to hear, to hear this. When I was on the MAG human services committee, a lot of that discussion wasn't all that relevant to the East Valley communities, and so I think this is important. I think identifying low-income housing as a solution is a little premature. I think it'd be more important to really understand what the problems are. So I'll vote to support it and prove it, but whoever is going to be at the table here, I'd really like to not solution it before we really understand the problem. And I'm just reflecting on our discussion this morning with Severar and National Association of Realtors. They gave us some really good feedback on how that solution probably wouldn't really address what we're looking at here on this topic of homelessness. So anyways, with that, Mayor, unless there's other discussion, I'd be, I'd move to approve Item 24.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you.
And Councilmember Taylor for Agenda Item 25.
Mayor, thank you. One other comment. So this is on personnel rules. Support this, would be happy to move it. One of the items does touch on the paid time off, and I'm, just would like to restate my advocacy to bring this up to current business practice, which is to take all of the time off. Right now, it's in all these buckets of sick and vacation and, you know, all of these segments. Current practice is to put it all in paid time off, and then it gives them the flexibility. It also gives a bias towards wellness, meaning you need to use it in that year that it's given you, because it's for your health and wellness of your employees, not accumulating it over, and you get these big liabilities on our books. I don't think that's really what the whole point of a, of a time-off program is. So I know I've talked about that in the past. I'd love to see that modernized. It's not necessarily relevant here, although it's adjacent. So to the extent we can talk about that in the future, I'd love to, to spend a little bit more time on that.
I think that's great feedback, and I see Kristin Drew sitting here in the audience today. So if you could take that back and find a way to incorporate that into maybe the next round of decision-making as it relates to our personnel roles. I know that we are often looking at those and adjusting and updating, so. Anderson?
I have a real quick question for Kristin. You know, we're trying to get, you shift to an at-will status in the town. Do you know how many employees will remain in a different status other than at-will once this is done?
Sure. Mayor, Council, Kristin Drew, interim chief town officer. I don't have an exact number for you. This isn't changing anything. It's still the same status that we had as of the last personnel rules. This is just clarifying that language. Currently, anyone, and this is a general explanation, the covered portion are primarily hourly employees hired prior to 8/1/2018.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve Agenda Item 25.
Second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. And I think that takes us to 23B.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me just share this motion with the council, and that everyone is clear. I'm going to, I'm going to move that we not approve Agenda Item 23B and reject the bid that we received. So a yes vote means we don't approve and we reject the bid.
Second.
Mayor, point of order, is that for A and B in this item?
Yes.
B, A, and B? Okay, thank you.
That's correct, Chris.
Yep.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries... Not the call. With a 5-0 vote. Okay, that moves us to our public hearing items. We do have a request for individuals to speak on 31A. Do we have any other requests from council on public hearing items? I'll do 31B after 31A, so I will remove both of those at this time. Okay, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 29, 30, 31, and 32. I will close the public hearing on those Agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 29, 30, 31, and 32. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. That does move us to Agenda Item 31A. This is a very confusing agenda by number tonight. We'll have to see what we can do about As and Bs when we're moving forward. Agenda Item 31A. And let's do this. Let's have a re-staff presentation on 31A, and then we will invite the public to speak. And then if the applicant wishes to also speak, that'd be a good time after the public speaks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sydney. I'm a planner, too, with Development Services. The site is located east of the northeast corner of Record and Williamsfield Road. It's approximately 15 acres. And the request before you tonight is for a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning. So for the minor general plan, existing village center, they'd like to go to multifamily medium, I apologize, residential 14 to 25 dwelling units an acre. Their proposed density is 18 dwelling units an acre with 276 proposed units in their design review. That is currently under review by staff. For the rezoning, it is currently existing Gateway Village Center zoning district with a planned area development overlay. They're proposing to go to multifamily medium with a new planned area development overlay. They're requesting six deviations. Four of them have to do with development standards. Three of them are setback requests for a reduction in setbacks. And then two of them are separate, having to do with other elements of our land development code and having to do with fencing, and also the street scape trees that are required in Cooley Station. And here is a view of the development plan. It's approximately 10 buildings, a little over 15 acres, with 276 units proposed as of now with the design review, with approximately 18 dwelling units an acre. The reasons for the proposed deviations were something that were pursued by the applicant from a recommendation from staff in order to fit the feel of the Cooley Station area, where we tried to push buildings closer to the streets in order to maintain that vision. And the planning commission recommended approval of the project with a 7 to 0 vote. There was no discussion on the approval or on the item because it was on consent, but it did pass 7 to 0, recommending approval to the town council on August 7th. And staff is recommending approval, and I'm here for questions if you have specific items you'd like to talk about.
Thank you, Sydney. And you're fairly new to the town. How long have you been with us?
Mayor Daniels, I've been here about a year at this point now.
Oh, terrific. This is your first presentation to council? Or did I miss one?
I came up and answered one question, so this is my first presentation to council.
You're doing awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I hate how tall this dais is. It's a little intimidating, but thank you for being here, and we're glad you're part of the team. All right. We have to do some get-to-know-yous now and again. I think we have a request to speak from the public.
Yes, Mayor. We actually have two that want to speak, but I, and there are two that do not want to speak. I just want to get clarification of, I'm going to put your names in the record, so I just want to verify. Anthony Lanzo? Is that correct? And Anthony is, does not want to speak. He's against this Agenda item. His comment is, "This is not what was promised. There needs to be a fence." So I add that to the record. And then Micah Tesser? Trezer? Tressler. He does not want to speak, and he's against the Agenda item. With that, we'd like to invite Ariel Jeter to the podium. Ariel, if you can share your name for the record and place a residency. And you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. I have some notes, so. All right. I do want to thank the ladies and gentlemen of the council and the mayor today for letting us speak on this issue. There are a couple residents from my neighborhood here today that are concerned about this issue. If you want to raise your hand if you're from our neighborhood, thank you so much. We have a very active Facebook group, and there were a lot of families that couldn't be here today but did want their voices heard. So myself and my husband, who also would like to speak, my husband is the HOA president of our neighborhood as well. So a lot of these concerns have been brought up to us through different individuals in our neighborhood. First off, I just want to say by agreeing to rezone that property is going to put hypothetical residents' needs and the needs of big business above the citizens who currently live there. We are vested in this community. We built in this community with the vision that this was going to be a town center, open and available. I actually was given, and so were other members of my community, a plot map, for lack of a better term, a colored plot map of, and I have copies of it today. I don't know if your Elmo machine works, but I'd be happy to show it to you, about what was promised to us was going to be directly in front of our homes. If we had been told that three-story apartment buildings were going to be directly in front of our homes, we never would have purchased there. This community means a lot to myself and my husband and to the other members that are here today who have taken their time out to be here. This is our first home that we built. We decided to plant our roots here in Gilbert. We are from here. Our son came home to this, this house that we decided to build there. And I want to put a little bit of things into perspective. We currently look into a farmer's junkyard, so the fact that we are this concerned here about apartments should say a lot to the council. It is going to block views that we have of Sand Tan Mountain. And another member in our Facebook group wanted me to bring up that we have a great view of the fireworks that are sent off from Higley, and we are not going to have those anymore. There's a lot of other things that I really wanted to touch upon. My husband has a lot of specifics since he is the HOA president. But I just want to reiterate that there are a lot of apartment complexes in Gilbert. I can throw a rock from my house to an apartment complex, but I can't do that to a local business. I think the property would be better off with those small businesses, bringing those necessities and those commodities to our community that we were promised. We have a huge problem with the lack of a fence. This is going to potentially increase damage to our property, because as soon as we increase population numbers, crime inevitably goes up. That's just how the statistics work. With that, there's going to be more foot traffic. There's going to be more actual traffic on a shared road that the business developers originally told us we would not be sharing a road with them. They have been disingenuous to us from the very beginning of this, and I think at this point, the council can make a great point here today by backing its citizens and not big business in this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to invite Joshua Jeter. Joshua, if you can state your name for the record and place a residence. We'll allow you to have three minutes to address the council. Thank you.
It's Joshua Jeter, same residence as her 4133 East Pony. I'm not as good of a speaker as she is, so I'm going to do a little bit more reading. So, Mayor, council members, my name's Josh Jeter. I'm the HOA president for Fenchurch Fields at Cooley Station. Thanks for the time and letting us speak today. My wife and I have lived in Gilbert for a good portion of our lives. We both graduated, or I graduated in the first class at Higley High School, and my wife was on the team that won the first state championship at Higley High School. This town, and more specifically, our community, means a lot to us. That's why I'm here speaking with you today. In my opinion, the approval of G1902 and Z1906 is going to hurt our, this neighborhood that we so love. When we moved to the neighborhood, like she said, when we moved to the neighborhood and bought our house in 2015, we were sold on the idea of a walkable town center with shops, restaurants, and some residences attached, something similar to Old Town Gilbert now. This is a major selling point by the builder. Like she said, a map was already, was given to us by the builder, you know, kind of laying out what the plan was for the future. With this new proposal of an apartment complex, these hopes and dreams are all but lost. This is a proposal that's going to have many negative effects on our community for many different reasons. The first of which is not having a gate separating the apartment complex and our subdivision. During the first meeting with the developer, I believe about a year ago, it was explained to us that there was going to be a fence separating the two, our subdivision versus the apartment complex, as well as no drivable entrance from the complex into our neighborhood. Voting yesterday will overturn this and allow a drivable entrance from our neighborhood as well as a void fence between our subdivision and the complex. I understand that having no fence, if there was going to be a, commercial buildings along with the residents to make everything walkable, but not in this case. As president of our HOA, we constantly deal with having to replace damaged lights, damaged brick walls in the park, vandalism in the pool area, et cetera. This is already a problem just in our community. Add an additional 600 to 1,000. People who are not vested in our community, 10 yards away with no fence between the two, this issue's likely to worsen. Another issue is traffic. Currently, at peak times, there is a line of cars trying to turn out of the subdivision to go south on record. It's already an issue with our current community. If you add 276 residences as proposed, there could be an additional 500 cars trying to come out of an already populated exit, not to mention parking. There's currently some parking in front of houses who face the proposed apartment complex. Most mornings, there are already cars parked in front of our house. Most mornings, there are already cars parked in front of our house. Add an additional 500 cars with no fence or entrance, and this becomes another problem for us to deal with. The final and likely most important issue is home value. Most residents in our neighborhood have enjoyed the recent increase in our home value since moving in. Adding 276 high-density, am I good? I'm almost done. High-density multifamily residences directly in front of our property is sure to drop our home value quite substantially. In summary, please reconsider. This current proposal was written, vote no on rezoning additional land for multifamily high-density, I think she said medium-density, I don't really know the difference, apartments. In addition, please eliminate the drivable, and most importantly, please eliminate the drivable entrance from our community into the apartment complex and follow through with the current Gilbert policy, keeping the fence between our single-family home community and high-density apartment complex. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks for standing up for your community. That's awesome. And being on the HOA, which is, just so you know, very similar to being on the council. So if you ever have other aspirations, just planting a seed. All right. We would love to hear from the applicant if they wish to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Daniels and members of the council, my name is Greg Davis. Here on behalf of the property ownership, which is the Geisel family. For the record, my office is located at 3317 South Higley Road here in Gilbert. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We do have a full presentation, which I won't bore you with unless you really want me to. But we will gladly try to respond to some of the concerns that neighbors raise. This project actually started over a year ago. And as you know, the town processes that when you have a rezoning in for pre-application, you actually go meet with the neighbors first. So before we even met with the town staff, we did have a neighborhood meeting in which our plan did not show any road or vehicular access to the north. And we did show a more prototypical apartment project that has walls and gates. As we went through the staff meeting and various other meetings and conversations with staff, they explained that in the Gateway area that they're trying to promote connectivity, and they really wanted us to take down the walls and have it be more open and passable and with trail connections so that people in our community can use the trail system throughout this part of town and vice versa. So that's why the project today does not have any walls or gates because that is one of the tenants of the Gateway character area, and we support that, even though typically we would put walls and gates in an apartment project. The second aspect of that was regarding the connection to the north itself. We were asked to put in a permanent ingress and egress on that alignment by the town traffic department for public safety as well as just convenience and access. We are going to be improving Haskell Street, which is the former Cooley Loop North, which is our north boundary. So traffic, obviously, on a half-street is going to be an issue. As development comes in, obviously, we're going to be expanding the roads and making that issue less of a problem as we move forward. So, let's see, other issue was... The concept of the Gateway area and the Village Center itself was a really grand concept, and it started back over 20 years ago. I was heavily involved at that. I know Councilmember Peterson sat through several meetings talking about it, and it was a great vision. And no one is here today happy that that's not here. Unfortunately, it's change in retail landscape and land use and what's been built elsewhere in the town has made it unfeasible. So this property today is zoned for up to six stories by right. It's zoned for up to 50 units per acre by right. So our proposal at 18 units per acre, and we do have three-story buildings that are on the south side of our project. Along the north, we're down to two stories. We feel is a much more compatible project than what the zoning would allow for today. So even though that retail element is going to be moving to the west and to the south, we still feel that this area is going to be a special node in the town. And we feel that this project is actually going to be more compatible and complementary to the existing housing area. So I'll stop with that, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have for me.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Sydney, can we ask you to come back up for a second? I know we've heard from the residents and also from the applicant about gates and also walls, but that's not really what we're here for tonight. Is that correct? And can you help paint the picture of when those types of conversations really will occur? This is strictly a zoning case. Can you talk about design and alternative design?
Mayor Daniels, during the design review process, we will go through the design scenarios. They do currently have it submitted. With the wall in mind, they are coming forth with a deviation that was requested by staff to... Because currently in our code, in our land development code 4.109, you are required to have an eight-foot separation fence when you're adjacent from a single-family residential or from a non-commercial district. So with this rezoning, that is the one element that is a part of it that would impact it. This does not impede them, though, from them putting up a gate at a later point. This would just allow them to deviate away from the requirement. So in the design review phase, if that were to be approved with the zoning as it currently is, we could still request a fence, or it could be modified in the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Any other questions from council for Sydney? Okay, thank you. Well, they're entertain a motion or have more discussion here from the council? Councilmember Taylor? Oh, Eddie? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you.
Vice.
I think I just want to make a comment. I know all of us were not on the council when this vision was discussed. Other than Councilmember Peterson, when she was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, she actually got to hear a lot of it. And I know that the vision was wonderful 20 years ago. And in fact, the town loved the vision enough where the bond to basically do the development of the roads, and they looked beautiful, in anticipation of, you know, the owners of the properties, the Cooleys and the Geisleys and so forth, and the vision of wanting to do that. And granted, the unfortunate downfall, the economy back in that 2008, 2009 timeframe really prevented really any movement from a business perspective to move forward. And we totally understand that economy had put a very serious hurt to a lot of those decisions and wanting to move forward. And a lot of that postponement obviously led to the San Tan Mall just exploding and the mall up on Power Road and Ray exploding. And again, the vision was still there, but as those commercial areas just developed so well, it put a lot of pressure on what could you attract along Williamsfield Road between Higley all the way to Power. And we struggled. I know I have struggled. We have struggled as a council to try to continue on with that vision and continue on with the dream of what that could look like. And as rightly said, if the mixed use would have been fully in place, we could have had six-story buildings of residential, and then the first floor would have been kind of that commercial, similar to what we saw, you know, downtown Mill in Tempe. I mean, that was kind of that vision. Or, excuse me, Mid Mill Avenue, excuse me. And for the economy and the economics, it just, that's just not the product here in Gilbert that would actually be viable. And so I know we have struggled through this as a council to get the families to start developing and so forth. I know that we made a big significant adjustment with the Frye Shopping Center. I mean, that was a major change for us to even agree to that. But again, that was commercial development to help those families have a grocery store and other businesses show up on that southeast corner of Record and Williams. It's not an easy decision for any of us. We have tremendously struggled through this as a team and trying to make the best of what was a wonderful vision. But again, I think that's just some of the groundwork or the homework I just wanted to share with the public, that this has not been taken lightly and it's been deeply discussed many, many hours, weeks, months about this property. So, thank you, Mayor.
As the mayor described tonight, we are really just entertaining the zoning on this property, which for the general plan and the amendment that we're doing, the zoning seems to be appropriate in the area. But I would underscore again something she said, and I'd really like the residents and staff to... This is not the end-all to the process, especially the issues that you brought up, are design issues that do need to be addressed going forward. And I encourage the residents to stay in touch with the staff and stay involved in that process because this isn't the end-all tonight. As Sydney has explained, there are design issues that still need to be addressed, and you still have an opportunity to do that. And I encourage the applicant to reach out again too, to talk about those issues between the staff and the residents and see how we can resolve those going forward to address the concerns that you have.
Mayor, I appreciate all the input. These are always the hard ones, you know, when you have two property right interests. It's seeming to conflict a little bit, but property rights, as you know, is very, very sacred to me. And one person's property rights can't impact another person's property rights, so how do you decide on this one? But I think for the discussion to continue to move forward, I'll be supporting this tonight, just noting the comments from Vice Mayor and Councilmember Anderson that there is more opportunity to continue to have dialogue, provide meaningful input, and we can adjust accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. As it's been said, I've been around a long time and watched this property and this area and the plans that have been thought of and built up and decided and discussed over the years. And then we watch them just sit there and sit there and sit there and sit there. Unless the Vice Mayor said, with the downturn in the economy, everything changed. And then commercial in our lives have also changed. Every week, there's a new store announcing that they're closing down. They're not even going to be in business anymore because of the Amazons in the world and the Walmart delivery and all of that that you have now. And so the concept of having first-floor retail with residential above has really gone by the wayside. We've seen a couple of projects come to Gilbert with that design in mind. None of them have come to fruition. The developers can't get funding for them, so they can't build them. It's been our hope and our dream that one would come up out of the ground. We're still waiting to see if that happens in Gilbert. There might be one at Higley and Ray eventually. But it just isn't something that seems to be feasible in this area with the current zoning that they have right now. As Greg Davis said, you could have six stories with retail on the bottom floor automatically. And I know you spoke to your views and all of that, and those would definitely be gone if that was allowed. This is a tough decision. It's always a tough decision, as Councilmember Taylor said, when you're talking one person's property rights over another person's property rights. We're hearing what you're saying about the design and the wall and all of that. The street will be finished. It was a half-street improvement for now, and it will be a full-street improvement when this project goes on. So Haskell will be a much better product for all of you to use eventually. You'll actually have less traffic with a multifamily product as opposed to a commercial product. The traffic study shows that. So I'm hoping that you can all be cognizant of living next to each other and be good neighbors and that it all works out in the long run. And this project did change, some of the scope changed a couple of years ago when the landowners that own the land down there asked us to do a land swap so that things moved around a little bit, and that happens over time. When you have a situation like this and new ideas come up and new product comes in, like the Frye's for the corner. So come to the Planning Commission meeting. Make sure your thoughts are heard, and when they're talking about the design, all of that can be decided at that point in time.
Thanks to all the council members who contributed. I just wanted to add one more thing, and that is that we are seeing some great development that is occurring in that area, and we are excited about some of the things that are coming. I don't think you're, I don't think you're going to miss out on some of those amenities that you do want in that area. And we've been working diligently with the other property owners as well as some developers on different areas and corners of that community. And I don't think I have any specific announcements to make. You have heard about the Frye's, but also some other amenities. We also do have, and the way it was always explained to me when I first came on council in 2009 was, "This is a mini Mill Avenue. This is high-density." It was designed that way, both from an infrastructure standpoint, but also those were the plans that were shared with me as a new council member, that there was going to be a lot of density in housing and in activity in that area. So if any of that was misrepresented to you, I can only apologize profusely that that communicated message did not get into your hands as you were looking to purchase and buy homes, and that's unfair to you. And I am sorry if that was the message that was communicated. But when, I've looked at these plans for 10 years now, and it's always been designed for a high-density product along that corridor. And so I do think we are honoring that through this project. And I also am very excited about some of the retail options that you are going to be getting in this area that will make a difference and that will increase your property values as well. So I make all those statements, and we'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we need to do 31A. I will close the public hearing on that agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Agenda Item 31A. Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. And I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 31B and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 31B.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. And thanks to everyone that came tonight. That moves us to our administrative items. We have a budget and contingency report for the fourth quarter. Does any council member wish to discuss this item? Right, let's have a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve Agenda Item 33.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Thank you. And the moment that Gordon Ray has been waiting for is finally here. We have our discussion and direction on the adoption of the 2018 building codes. I think that Gordon's been waiting for this for a solid three years at this point, and we want to make sure we meet Gordon's needs. So I think Councilmember Taylor, are you kicking this one off?
Mayor, Larry Taylor and I, you got the Taylor team here.
Awesome. No relation, but the Taylor team.
That's right. No relation, but he is a good man. I can vouch for that. Larry, I'm going to give this to you as well. Mayor, Larry has a little bit to present, and then I'll pick it up from there, and then we'll have a couple of questions and comments from council here. I will say that this is a non-voting item. This is really just discussion. So the outcome here is for Larry, Kyle, and the staff to really get a sense of direction. Where I think November is when they hope to come back with something for us to adopt.
And we do have Rusden and Gordon, they would like to speak on this agenda item, so I do want to give some time for them.
Oh, thank you. That's right. And while Larry's getting ready, I will say we've got our famous placemats here that we will reference, so go ahead and get those out here for just a minute. Larry, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. If you remember back to the initial report out from the Subcommittee in June, the recommendation was to adopt the 2018 building codes, primarily because there's a lot of less restrictive items in them. Having said that, there were some concerns about some of the more restrictive items in the code. And so staff received direction at that meeting to review those more restrictive items and involve more stakeholders and to come back in September, that's why we're here, to, with our recommendations. So this is a list of the stakeholders that we involved. Since June, we have met with the Home Builders Association, met again a second time with the Chamber of Commerce. the Chamber of Commerce, didn't actually meet with the Multifamily Housing Association, but was in communication via email and as well as phone. I reached out to multiple architects, designers, and engineers and tried desperately to try to put a meeting together. Everybody's really busy, and that didn't work out. But I ended up, through email, sending out the same spreadsheets you have in front of you today. It's on the dais, as well as the slide presentations that we provided for the other groups. And so through that process, I was able to receive feedback. In total, there were 162 significant changes to the 2018 codes. Eighty-one of those were less restrictive. Thirty-eight were more restrictive, and of those 38, we are proposing to move forward 21 of those. Eleven of the items were neutral, meaning that there was really no effect, but either some clarification or just new items in the code, such as battery storage, you know, technology items that needed to get into the code because of new technologies. There were 32 new items, such as those. We're proposing to move forward 26 of those items, and the items that we dropped out of the new category are primarily because we found that there were a half a dozen or so that the county has jurisdiction over, and so there was no need for us to bring those forward. And I just lost my slideshow. There we go. As far as the green code and the energy code, I wanted to speak to that just briefly. The green code will remain the same, as optional as it currently is. However, the energy code, if you recall, when we adopted the 2012 codes, we had maintained the 2006 as the minimum code and the 2012 as an optional. That has become a little bit burdensome for staff. It's really not very business -- a very good business model to juggle two codes. So in an effort to try to combine everything into 2018 code, I reached out to all of the stakeholders involved, and I think we've come up with something, a good solution for everybody. We've basically combined the 2006 and the 2018, plus amendments that have been suggested by the Home Builders Association and the Multifamily Housing Association. And I think everybody's happy with what we've come up with. We basically have two separate paths to follow. You can choose one of the two paths, and the rest of the code is optional. But this way, we have one code to follow, and it's going to be easier for my staff to manage. That's for the energy code, the residential energy code specifically. For the commercial energy code, the feedback I received from architects was that there wasn't much change between the 12 and the 18. In fact, in most ways, the 18 actually became less restrictive. It actually offered additional paths to meet the code requirements. There were a few additional items added to the code that were more restrictive, and they were not in favor of those, and so I struck those out.
Larry?
Yes.
So it has a net -- a neutral impact, right?
Correct.
If I understand from our Subcommittee, we're really just bringing forward the recommendation as using the current language, but in terms of code, it's -- the effect is the same for both residential and commercial? Is that your understanding as well?
On the commercial side, everything's moving to the 18. There's no longer -- and honestly, on the commercial side, everybody's moved to the 12 already because the software that's available, it's called COMCheck, is no longer available for the 06. And so everybody's moved to either the 9 or the 12 versions already, and the 18 is actually less restrictive than the 12s. And so it really is an net effect, or maybe slightly decrease in restrictions.
Okay, thank you. And I know Gordon and Rusden were part of that discussion stakeholder group on these specific, the green and energy, and appreciate them participating and giving us their thoughts in that. Thank you.
This is a lot to look at. This is the same thing that you have on your dais. Basically, this is from a building standpoint only. This is the residential and the commercial. The green highlighted portions of your spreadsheets is what this is. And then from a fire standpoint, these are basically the more restrictive items that we talked about, that we wanted to have a discussion on tonight or receive feedback on tonight, both on the building and the fire side of things. We do have fire representatives tonight present to answer any questions on the fire code. And then finally, this is my last slide, just to talk about the timeline. Obviously, we're tonight to receive feedback on these more restrictive items that we're presenting tonight. We would like to use October to take tonight's feedback and continue to put our amendment package together, as well as the ordinance, and come back in November for an official vote, with the intent to -- for them to go into effect on January 1st. And that's all I have. Would you like me to share your slide?
Larry, why don't you go ahead and put it in there? Mayor, this might be a good time to hear from public comment.
Great idea.
Mayor, we would like to invite Gordon Ray to the front. Gordon, if you can share us your name for the record, place or residence, and we will give you three minutes to address the council. Thank you, sir.
I'm Gordon Ray, live in Gilbert. Mayor and council, I wrote this down, trying to get in three minutes. The town has identified four goals that they want to achieve as they consider the adoption of the 2018 ICC family of building codes. Adopting the 18 codes as mandatory will not accomplish one single one of these goals. I'd like to address each goal separately. The first goal of the town is to create consistency between cities as far as code enforcement is concerned. We think that just like there is only one Bible, which has 1,590 pages, there are over 1,000 different churches, simply because every preacher has his own interpretation of the verses. Every city has their own interpretation of the exact same code-reference items, and since there are over 4,000 pages of code items, we think that this goal is absolutely unachievable. Right now, there's not even consistency between any two plan reviewers in the same city using the same code. The checklist option will solve this problem in Gilbert because the code-reference numbers are left off, and the town's interpretation is spelled out in detail on the checklist, so everyone from the homeowner up involved with the building process can understand what is required. The second goal of the town is applicability of the code. We think that this goal can only be achieved with the proposed checklist option because every single enforceable code item is spelled out exactly how the town wants that item to be enforced. By adopting the checklist option, everyone literally will be on the same page. The third goal of the town is for simplicity of interpretation and enforcement of the code. We think that by adopting over 4,000 pages of code items that are not spelled out in detail, that this can never be simple for anyone involved in the building process to read or understand. The checklist option solves this problem completely. The fourth and final goal of the town is to make the code as clear as possible. I ask you now, how in the world can passing over 4,000 pages of code items that hardly no two individuals involved in the building process can agree on the interpretation of be as clear as a one-page enforceable code spelled out in detail and attached to every single plan set? The checklist option will become a living document. It can easily be amended by the town council quickly every time a new life safety issue arises. What do you have to lose? You can always go back to the way the town has been doing things for the past 50 years. Please try it. I think that everyone involved will like it.
Do you have any questions?
We're good. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you. We'd like to invite Rusden Ray to the podium. Rusden, if you can share us your name and place or residence for the record, and we have three minutes to address the council. Thank you.
Rusden Ray, I currently live in Queen Creek and work full-time in Gilbert. And I'd just like to start off by saying thank you to -- just saying thank you that you set up this process, to Mayor Daniels and the rest of the council. This has been a very pleasant process that I've actually enjoyed. Sometimes it's hard to get away from work, but when I'm there, I actually like it, just talking to people and going through the process. And Kyle and Larry have been pleasant to work with, they're always there to meet us with a smile, and they've been very helpful. And as you can see, they've done a lot of work, and they've been addressing a lot of the concerns. And we agree, we're actually right in line with what they've done with the energy and the green code. We think it's productive. We think it's beneficial to the town, and without any negatives. It's addressing the main issues while allowing choice to the citizens as well. I'd like to say also about the adoption of the rest of the code. Larry has addressed a lot of the concerns and has done line-item vetoes, basically of eliminating a lot of non-life safety issues, and that's great. And I agree with those. I would just also just like to comment on the process, that there was a big effort put out there to get comments from the citizens. And the options we put out there, whether to adopt the entire code and minus a few items, or adopt the entire code as optional, but in addition to that, make the checklist the mandatory. And it's the current Town of Gilbert checklist, and that's what we're recommending, as allowing that to be the enforceable part of the entire thousands of pages of code, which I think would be even more beneficial than what has been presented already. We've discussed that, and that's been presented as well. I'd just like that to be in consideration, as I believe over 90% and possibly closer to 95% of the comments that came in, those who've made the effort to make the comments did support that idea, adopting the entire code, like the energy code, as optional and addressing the part that we want to make mandatory. And that we believe that same process can be done with the entire code by allowing it all to be optional, apart from the town checklist, which is over 120 items. It makes perfect sense, what the town has been using, and to us and all those that have made the comment, made the effort to make the comments, agree and supported that idea. Again, I'd like to thank Larry and Kyle for their effort, and your guys' -- this is a process, just let everyone know. This isn't done anywhere else in the country. This is a process unique to Gilbert, that you guys are living up to your seal there, we the people, allowing us to make our comments. And so I'd just like to say thank you, and if you have any questions, you can always call us or email us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rusden. Thank you, Gordon. Larry, the checklist, let me just make sure that everybody's clear on that. That is not a tool that's used in the field, that's at the desk, if I understand from our Subcommittee. But would you like to just clarify that?
Correct. So the checklist that's being referred to is our plan review checklist. That was created over time based on continual comments that we've had to make on the plans. It was never intended to be a complete code. So one of my concerns, even if we were to use it for single-family residential, it doesn't address duplexes or townhouses or those types of things. Strictly the things that we've seen over and over that have been missed on the plans, and so it was kind of a heads-up to designers and architects, hey, as a minimum, make sure these items are on your plans when you submit.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mayor, if I could continue. Josh, did you want to say anything? I know Larry's really zeroed in on residential and commercial. Okay, we may have you come up on a couple of things, but Mayor, let me just summarize the recommendations that we have here, and we have a couple of decisions to give direction to staff, okay? There's lots of agreement, as you can tell, on the majority of it, which is a lot different than in the prior cycle. So that's a victory to begin with. I want to thank Scott and Amy for joining as well. We had a lot of meetings. Here's the -- let me just summarize, actually, before I do that, let me make sure that we're clear on the placemats. I'm going to reference these a couple, right? We have three of them, residential, commercial, and fire, and you can see up in the top left-hand corner. And when we talk about reducing regulations, they're serious. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I was a little skeptical when I thought, oh, no, here we go again, you know? But then when we saw the relief coming in it, I got a little excited about it. You can see, less restrictive, I mean, the whole front page of the fire code is less restrictive, and you can see that. The other thing that we asked staff to do was, I mean, the less restrictive is some of the longest lists. The other thing we asked them to do is to take seriously, is there data that justifies new regulations if they are coming forward? And they took that seriously, and I very much appreciated that. If you look on residential and commercial on the backside of the placemats, you will see under more restrictive, a bunch of codes that have strike-throughs, right? So they even went to the, an extra effort to remove additional codes that, you know, if we just kind of passed it, all of these things, they were really unnecessary or unjustified. Now, we may see that they have justification in the future, and I expect staff, and I hope that they will come forward and say, you know what, we probably need to revisit this. We do see some justification now. Okay, so that's both in the restrictive and the new. So I think on the net, we are seeing immediate relief, not just what we've stricken out of the new, but also from the existing. And Scott, you're welcome to jump in anytime, but I'm just going to move right through to the recommendations, if that's okay. But please, please jump in if there's anything you'd like to add. So there's a series of recommendations that the Subcommittee came forward with to make -- okay, yeah, and if you can just go to the third slide. Mayor, this is an eye chart as well. I really apologize. So let me just walk through these.
My eyes.
Yeah. I should have brought an extra pair for everybody here. That's right. She was just bragging that she could read the placemats without her glasses, so. Slide three. It's on 3D, yeah. Get your 3D glasses out.
No, it's small, can't see.
Yeah, you know what? I'm not sure if we can read it. Let me just start walking through, okay? Number one, we talked about the checklist, and we need to look at this in two aspects. There's one that we had a lot of agreement on, and then there's one that we need to talk about, okay? The one that we had a lot of agreement on the checklist came from the Rays, and they said, can we just at least bring some of the language from the 2018 codes on the checklist? There was some confusion about how to interpret all those. So I'm on the right-hand side, first bullet. These are the recommendations. And there's really no editing of those, it's just bringing that language forward. So the people that use that as a reference tool as they're preparing things are actually seeing the language that people that are using that over the desk, okay? So there was really consensus on language on that. We're going to come back to the checklist in just a second. That's the one that we're going to need to talk a little bit about. Another recommendation is what you see forward with the placemats. And I'm not going to go through, I am going to come to a couple of details here, but you can see over 80 are less restrictive. Larry corrected, Larry's number was right. I put 82, it's 81. Okay, so there are some new ones here, and we do want to have new technology in our town and know how to appropriately support that. So that's largely the nature of that. For the fire, they probably have the longest list of new things, but you can see on the placemats here how some of those are called out, largely life safety issues. A lot of those were things that are technically new in the code book, but they were things we were already, that we already had in our process. So appreciate Josh for bringing that to our -- and you can see that annotated on the placemats as well. Okay, there are some proposals for amendments that we haven't detailed here from Home Builders Association and Multifamily. As I mentioned this morning at our meeting with the Realtors, those have been adopted by pretty much every jurisdiction in the valley as reasonable exceptions. And Larry, I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on it. There was really widespread support for that as well. And so we appreciate their participation in that. So that would be another part of the recommendation, is to amend out those recommendations. And they were submitted back in April when we brought this forward. So I won't redo that. So I want to just highlight probably four things that came forward from staff that I'm recommending that we do not adopt, and we add to our amend-out list. Let me go through these. One is the requirement for arc fault electrical outlets. And Larry, you can, you know, chime in whenever you want on that, but I think that's a nice-to-have, and frankly, I think a lot of builders are already doing that. I don't think that we necessarily need another code to make that happen if they're already doing that. But Larry, would you want to add anything there?
So I've already taken that off the table. Your spreadsheets are updated.
Okay.
That is one of the strikeout items.
One of the strike-through, okay, thank you. Okay.
Can we get a verbal confirmation from Gordon Ray that if that gets taken out, he will no longer put anything in the socket to demonstrate online or anything else? Oh, you haven't?
Uh-oh, she's asking for demonstration.
I think I have a video. We just want everybody to be safe.
All right, so that's out, unless there's any discussion here to keep those in. Okay. Okay, then the other two that I want to talk about are on the, on the backside of the fire placemat here. If we can, under the new sections, there's two items towards the bottom that I'd like to recommend that we pull out of here. At the, the second from the bottom, you can see crowd managers, okay? This, this requirement is, if you go to a facility, you'll see an occupancy number. So it'll say, if you have, you know, 500. So the recommendation from the IBC is that if you are over your occupancy, then you're required to have trained crowd managers. And I just think fire has more important things to do than manage that net. I think groups that have large enough assemblies, whether they're churches or schools or things like that, have safety procedures in place, and it's a big, it's a big issue. So I just think they have more important things to worry about. I'm recommending that we take that out, but I'm more than happy to have Josh weigh in on that. Let me just do the one other thing, and then if Josh wants to weigh in, then we can, we can go from there. If you go up three, excuse me, four, you'll see inspection of temporary stages over 400 square feet. If you've been to like Constitution Week, you know, the big stage rigging that, you know, it comes in on a semi, and then it kind of opens up like a clamshell. It would be something like that, over 400 square feet. To me, I think that's more on the building side anyways. But again, those things are largely, you know, installed by professionals. They probably know a lot more about how to do that than what we have internally. And I, again, I think our fire department has more important things to worry about than something that's actually more on the structure, that's more in Larry's department. So I'm recommending that that be pulled out as well. Let me just stop there on the fireside. Josh, is there anything that you wanted to add or clarify on that?
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Mayor Daniels and council? Do you have them?
Josh, is this your maiden voyage at presenting here?
Yes, it is.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Again, my name is Josh Friedman. I'm the interim Fire Marshal for the town. And I just wanted to touch base on those two items. The first one is the temporary special event structures. As you can see from these photographs here, these stages are put together by professionals. However, there are times when they fail. These structures are not regulated by the building code and Larry's folks because they are temporary structures. So eventually, the building code may catch up, but until then, the fire code is regulating these. We have made amendments to, or proposing to make amendments, that we're only going to regulate things that are over 18 inches in height, which would eliminate most of the risers and stuff that schools use or religious institutions. And then we're also going to remove a lot of the requirements that cause financial burden to the people that bring them in. Code currently, the proposed code states that we, the owner of the stage would have to bring in a third-party inspector to do the inspection and meet all the qualifications. We're proposing to take that out, and they just provide us with an installation and use guideline. And by giving us those, then our town inspectors will be able to make sure that it's being used appropriately. And then on the crowd managers, the crowd managers you see at all types of events, as Councilman Taylor related, these are the people that come to the gates. When you come to a gate, they check your tickets. These are bouncers in front of bars or other facilities. The idea behind a crowd manager is actually training these people because unfortunately, in today's society, it's more than just being able to evacuate people for a fire. The crowd manager position allows us to train them. And in this training, they would receive ideas on how to interact with public safety, how to do evacuations, how to deal with masses and mass exodus. And so there's a lot of different things that a crowd manager brings. I agree, we don't need the more responsibilities, but I feel like this is a good one, that we actually do this almost today without calling it a crowd manager because if somebody wants to go to over their occupancy load, we have to review that anyway and allow them to do that, as we've done in many cases. That's all I got, unless you have questions.
You might, you might get someone, just.
Okay.
Okay, so we did decide, do we want to opt them out? That's the subcommittee. Scott, if you want to weigh in, we were okay bringing those out in terms of what we see in November, but now's your chance to check in with Josh if you want more information on that.
Two questions. What is your inspection of a stage actually, like, what do you actually do when you go inspect a stage? And then also, what is a crowd manager training look like? Is that like an online portal that takes 10 minutes, or is that a two-day class?
I'll do the second one first because it's easier. Mayor Daniels and council. The crowd manager training, there are several options. It's up to the jurisdiction. There's currently classes that are offered by some of the larger event promoters. And our recommendation for those that are not part of that organization or institution is there's an online training class that's available, that meets all the requirements that we are looking at. And the second part of your, or your first question, but the stage inspection, we currently, to this day, receive copies of all the installation guidelines, and we go out and make sure that the way they set up the stage is appropriate to the way that the manufacturer is requesting it. It's kind of a misnomer to talk about the stage. We're more talking about the rigging stuff that hangs up above, the trusses and stuff like that. So it's making sure that all the pins are in place, making sure that if they're supposed to, based on the manufacturer's guidelines, if they're supposed to have a, allowed to hang stuff from there, what the weight limit is, and looking all that, at that. One of the other key portions of this, which you can see from the photos up there, is that wind shear and elemental, the elements are a big part of that. So the guidelines that are given by the manufacturer that we would look at also takes into account, is it on the surface that it's supposed to be used on? And are there wind and weather conditions for, appropriate for the stage?
So are you on a scissor lift, checking all those pins and weighing equipment and trying to, I mean, how?
No.
How are you really ensuring? I just, the practical application of, we are inspecting this. I guess I get a little bit concerned that the town is now inspecting this type of thing for two reasons. Number one is, the event promoter or whomever is putting on the event has a vested interest in ensuring that that is 100% secure. In the event, tragic event, that that isn't. I'm not sure them saying, well, fire came out and inspected and said we were good, makes me feel better in the event that a tragic event occurs. Of course, no one sets out. In addition to that, don't they have insurance?
Mayor Daniels, yes. They, they do, and they are required to have insurance. The other portion of this inspection, no, we don't go up on scissor lifts. Most of these stages start at the ground, and we inspect them when they're at the ground, and then they raise them up per the specifications.
So you know how much all of that equipment weighs on there, and you've balanced it off. I mean, I'm just trying to think of how we practically apply this.
Mayor Daniels, no, we don't. We go by what they tell us and, based on what we see and what the, a lot of the equipment has weights listed on it and stuff like that. But we really do rely on the owner of the stage and the people installing it to give us the appropriate information. And then we're just verifying that what they did is along the guidelines that the manufacturer recommends.
Mayor, and I would just add that in the case that there's pyrotechnics on this rigging, then they're already involved. I mean, they, nothing's changing there. They're already supervising some of the things that may be up there that, you know, would be, you know, fire-related, so. Are we, as a council, okay, giving direction to staff, consistent with the subcommittee? Or did you want to go ahead and keep these in?
Question. Josh, how often have you had to inspect a stage like this or a temporary structure like this? I'm just curious.
We work with the building department on these, and Constitution Days is probably the, the one that we do most common every year. And the promoter on that is Mirrorstone, and we work with them all the time.
And for the crowd managers, you said something about the staff with organizations or companies. So those people would probably do this over and over and over again anyway, in different locations? They're already trained to do this in different locations?
Correct. Most of the people that, that come out to do your special events and your big events, whether it's a concert, whether it's a function at a school, they're usually bringing in either security guards or members from different companies throughout the valley. And they are already trained in this. It's just requiring those who aren't trained. The biggest benefit, like I said, is that it allows them to speak the language that the emergency responders speak as well.
Mayor, and I would just add, he mentioned Mirrorstone. That is a very high-end production company that does a lot of the rigging for like the Mesa Arts Center and, you know, the big-time event performances. So they're not like small-time players. I mean, they really know their, their business and how to set that up. So I want to keep the discussion going. If I don't hear that there's any opposition to the subcommittee, can we move to the checklist? Okay, because these are things that we can bring back by amendment in November if there's additional discussion or education that we have. But Scott, did you want to add anything before we move forward? Okay. All right, we're going to move to the last one, okay? This is, we want to bring up the checklist, okay? We've heard from Gordon. I know we've received some emails. Mayor, you've been receiving some, I have. And Gordon, thank you for educating us. This is a town that loves education, so we appreciate that. Okay, we just need to make a decision. And we told, we told Gordon, thank you for all the input, but we do need to make a decision so staff knows what to bring back in November. Really, we have two choices here. What's that? That's, thank you, that's good. Okay. All right, so as the subcommittee, generally what we coalesce is the placemats with all the exceptions and amendments and less restriction and things like that. I think the major piece there was that it's a little bit more encompassing on the non-single-family home piece of the residential development in the community. Now Gordon's checklist idea has great merit, and you heard what he said. And Gordon, you know, on the consistent, I don't think anybody here, I can't speak for them, but we're not under any illusion that there will be any consistency in our lifetime between jurisdictions on the codes. And there probably shouldn't be. Tempe's different than Phoenix, and we have different demands. And, you know, our building department is going to justify everything, which is huge. So anyways, simplicity, Mayor, that was one of your directions when we launched this. I think bringing 82 down is helping there. Is it going to be as simple as a uniform checklist? Probably not. There was widespread support from the developers that we did a poll, an informal poll, on that idea. So it's not as if the idea doesn't have merit, is as encompassing as the one that the subcommittee was, was talking about in the placemats in front of you. Probably not, but it actually has merit. And I wanted Gordon to make sure that we heard that firsthand from him. And I'm going to be quiet and see what questions you have because we just need to make a decision or a, some guidance and move forward for November.
First of all, I very much appreciate the work that the subcommittee did and the staff did. I think when we started talking about this, we did have some direction. I don't know that we had the four goals that Gordon brought up. I don't remember having that conversation here, but I do know that we gave direction for us to make sure that we were being clear, that we're being, that we're simplifying, and that we are definitely moving forward as a community. That's an important component of what we do. I am really happy with the work that the subcommittee did and happy to move forward with their recommendations in preparation for November. Of course, I understand and can appreciate the idea of a single-page checklist. I just don't think in today's environment, that's a realistic goal for us to have. And so I appreciate the fact that that's an internal document that is meant to assist our teams and help them to really identify several key things that are oftentimes lacking in plans. But obviously, our code is going to be more comprehensive than that as we move forward. So thanks for all the work that you guys did. I'm happy to continue to see this through to November and grateful that the three of you put all this time and effort into making this a streamlined, and three plus Larry and Kyle and many others.
Yeah, I think the comment I would like to make, and I know we've had this discussion since I've been on the council with even the previous, you know, building codes, you know, and I've had many discussions with the Ray family as well. I think what I like to do this time, because we've talked about this, you know, amongst us, is that we're all voting members on the larger, you know, what I call the more national committee that comes up with these codes and decides to vote on them, to get them into the books. I would actually like us to have an opportunity to go back when the next codes come around and take these ideas and try to remove them out of the books. And I'm not sure how that will go with the committee, but if we're going to make this type of an effort to make it more streamlined, I would like us to make these recommendations at the, you know, maybe national level, since we're a voting member.
Think that might be a full-time job? I'm pretty sure we need to keep Larry here.
It could be, but I know with Gordon and Ruston, I mentioned this to them, and I know that there is an intimidation to do this because obviously, the big players that, you know, the big manufacturers of the parts, you know, they get their parts in there and everyone has to buy their part. I know that it's supposed to be self-governed by the industry folks. It's not a, you know, a government entity, but it may become like a pseudo-government entity. But I would like to take these recommendations and try and make an effort to try to remove some, you know, present the business case, why Gilbert's not doing it. And maybe this will be the beginning of trying to streamline the national efforts. Again, if you remove one, that's one that is a home run, I think. It'll be probably the first time, maybe one of these gets removed instead of getting added. But I would like to make that recommendation. If we're going to make this level of effort at the local level, I would love to try to do it at the national level. That'd be just my recommendation. Yeah, thank, thank you. And, you know, checklist for the other categories in residential that wouldn't be adding, which is, you know, where it could have legs, is definitely an idea worth exploring as well. Mayor, I guess we just need to see if staff has enough information. I think we've covered all the high points.
I want you guys to be full-time lobbyists and run our building department.
Gordon wants to say one more thing.
Gordon, we're going to make a special exception for you if it helps me avoid an email from you later. Come on down to the mic. No, come on down to the mic because we can't hear you. Make sure you set the timer, Patrick. I'm just kidding.
No, 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 no.
I'm just kidding.
When you said one page, it's 36 by 24, single-spaced, and every single- When you said one page, it's 36 by 24, single-spaced and every single spaced, the entire 24 by 36 is that one-page code. So there's like, I don't know how many pages, 17 pages of the checklist.
What's the font size, Gordon?
Little, little.
Double your prescription.
And that's the one page. So it's really inclusive. And then with all the specifications on each item, anybody can do it. Anybody can understand it.
Thank you, Gordon. We do love your passion. It's true.
Mayor, I really appreciate, it's so important. We wouldn't have cut as many regulations without their input. We wouldn't have been able to take the justification orientation that we have. And so as with all public policy, there's puts and takes. So I think we have a place that is comfortable for all the different parties. No one has any major objections, but I think everybody got a couple of big wins out of all of this. So Mayor, thank you for the assignment and we look forward to staff back in November.
Are we good to go? I get thumbs up, awesome. Thank you. All right, Nikki, you're up. We have a presentation and request for direction on potential changes to the Gilbert paratransit services. And I should have been more formal, Nicole McCarty.
Where is this, Nikki? What's it called? What's your mail address for this? There it is. Do what? Where's the guy? There we go. Now we're good to go? Perfect.
Al, can you do this in two minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I don't know about Nikki, but I can't. I have like three slides. Good evening. So we are back before you tonight to get some direction on some transit options. We've got about a four-part overview, actually three-part overview, and then the ask is at the end. And that's to get the direction on how you'd like staff to move forward. Kind of starting with the recap, in February at the financial retreat, we approached council. We gave you an overview of the transit system that's in Gilbert. We focused primarily on paratransit and ride choice at that time. And we talked about a funding shortfall of about $375,000 as we looked forward the future projections and the demands on the system. Since February, a lot of work's been done. The council did approve a new IGA with Valley Metro in June. Nikki has done a very in-depth analysis of ridership trends and costs for the services. And then we've discussed, we've continued discussions with Valley Metro and other municipalities about the transit system and the services. A lot of changes have been made within the valley and Nikki may touch on some of those as we go forward. Just as a reminder, the fixed route bus system in Gilbert has six local routes and one express route. And the express route runs from the Heritage District Park and Ride into Phoenix. We have a paratransit service that is operated by Valley Metro. It's a door-to-door shared ride service for ADA-certified riders who normally can't take the conventional bus. The federal law mandates that this service be offered within three-quarters of a mile of a fixed route bus system, but currently, the town of Gilbert offers it community-wide. And then the ride choice is, again, it's a door-to-door private ride service offered to ADA-certified riders, but this is more of an Uber or a taxi cab service. And again, this is offered throughout the entire community. This slide basically just shows you where the funds currently come from that fund the transit services. One thing to note is a lot of these dollars do not come directly into the town of Gilbert. They go strictly or directly to Valley Metro or given to Valley Metro and that the transit services are paid for our behalf by them and run forward. Some of the things to note too, as we looked at the analysis, the fixed route bus service, the funds are decreasing over time with the exception of some of the Prop 400, which have always been programmed to increase year after year for a while. The paratransit, again, has gone up slightly in funding, but not enough to cover the cost, which you'll see in just a second. And then you can also see the ride choice service, the funds have dropped significantly through the new Freedom Funds and then the ride choice revenues are up as well. The cost in the proposed growth is where we're seeing some of the changes. The annual miles have gone up slightly with the fixed route. Again, some of that is because of bus line extensions like the one on Ray Road. But the costs have also gone up over what we're seeing in the revenue increases. And that is due to increased cost of fuel, increased cost of the fleet, contract charges with the providers. You can see the paratransit, the trips are actually going up as well, but the net cost is going up. So the annual one-way trips have gone up 4%, but our annual net cost has gone up 18.4%. Ride choice is the same way. The one-way trips is up 14%, but the cost is up 80%. I will stop there and let Nikki kind of walk you through the other two parts and then we'll get direction from council at the end. Thank you.
Kyle was really nervous about those slides with all the numbers on them. He kept trying to give them to me. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm going to dig in a little deeper here onto the ridership trends and costs of the different services we offer. So I'm going to focus first on fixed route bus service. We're showing you the Valley Metro system-wide map just to kind of start this conversation off with a reminder that we are part of a very large region and a very large regional transit system. Valley Metro operates 62 local routes and 20 express routes with an annual fixed route ridership of 49.3 million. And that's just fixed route bus service, not getting into the rail and other services. Here in Gilbert, we have six local routes and one express route, as Kyle mentioned, with a total ridership of 245,000 a year. I ranked, or I listed the routes in order of ridership. So you can see our top route is Gilbert Road with an average daily ridership of close to 400. And our lowest route is Power Road with an average daily ridership of 50. So big variety in the, you know, ridership on our routes throughout town. And as you can see by the map, our routes are primarily in the northern part of our town with that one little dip down into Mercy Road. But primarily, we don't serve South Gilbert right now with transit. This is a breakdown of the ridership by type. We offer weekday, weekend, holiday. Not all routes are offered on Sundays and holidays, but this is just a breakdown to show that by far, our weekday ridership is the highest, 66%, which makes sense. It's a lot of commuters and a lot of riders going to work and school. Looking at some three-year ridership trends, these are very common with national trends. Ridership is going down. The anomalies here are Route 140, you see a drastic increase. That's because that's the railroad route that came online just in November of 2018. And then we're seeing a little bit increase on the express, which probably is due to some more traffic in the region, and some increase on Williamsfield Road, which, as you know, goes down to Mercy, goes over to Polytechnic, goes to the mall. So again, these routes, we have to think outside of our lines. Route 108, for example, Elliott Road starts in Awatuki. So when we're talking about route ridership and route success, we have to think that there's not just in the Gilbert boundaries that that success is measured on. The cost per mile, for all of the local routes, they're fairly similar. The costs are all going up over the past three years with the express route being the most efficient route, of course, with very few stops, and so it's a little bit less expensive. Valley Metro ranks all of their routes and they analyze the top quartile and the bottom quartile. So I just wanted to point out that currently, we have, well, this is fiscal year 18, they haven't come out with 19 yet, but we had three routes in the bottom, two in the top. And those are the performance measures that they look at when they're considering a route's performance. Boardings per revenue hour, boardings per revenue mile, fare box recovery, and on-time performance. And really, those, they've, their policy is to analyze the bottom routes and the top routes and to try to figure out kind of what changes need to be made to improve those routes. So that's fixed route bus going into accessible transit services. As Kyle mentioned, there's two parts of that. There's the paratransit and the ride choice. This is really what we focused on in February, so I'll try to be quick through this. But I really want to point out the major difference here, which is the cost of our paratransit service is significantly higher than the cost of the ride choice. There's, that's due to the differences in the nature of these services. Paratransit is a federally mandated service within three-quarters of a mile fixed route. And so there, the vans and the drivers and everything goes through a different, more strict process of certification that really ups the cost. Ride choice is Ubers, taxis. It's not a mandated service, so it has a much lower cost to the town. The difference to the rider is a $4 per trip fare on paratransit gets them unlimited mileage versus on ride choice, they're limited to eight miles at $3. And then every mile after that is $2 to them. We have entered into a pilot program right now with ride choice and that is offering, instead of offering 50 trips per month at eight miles, they're offering some riders up to 400 miles is their allotment for the month. And this is allowing them to go longer distances, but they might run out of their miles quicker. But it also might keep them from going on paratransit to get that longer trip. So it could still be, you know, a better cost savings. The longest, the longest trip on paratransit is 59 miles. As I said, there's unlimited miles versus 23 on ride choice. So they really are being used for different purposes right now. But what's really important is that 90% of our trips right now are paratransit, which is, of course, the more expensive service right now. When we're looking at our forecast assumptions for these two services, as I mentioned already, the ridership trends are going up, funding sources are going down, just like all of our services. But other really important factors we need to consider for these specifically is that our population is aging and it is growing and the demand is going up. We have our ADA certifications, I think additional 100 to 200 per year added. And the expansion of fixed route bus lines in communities all around us will impact our paratransit. Queen Creek has recently rejoined Valley Metro and is looking at adding transit to their community and that will impact us. If Mesa or Chandler add more lines or increase their service, that will impact us. The federal requirement to have that paratransit service area does not take into account local jurisdictions. And so additionally, the changes Mesa just July 1st reduced their paratransit service area and Maricopa County did the same and it goes into effect in a couple of days here on October 1st. What the meaning of that is to us is that if our paratransit service area is now more convenient than Mesa's or Maricopa County's where they've scaled back, they will now come into our area and take the ride. Because wherever, you can take the ride from any paratransit service area you get to. So whichever area is most convenient to you, that's where the rider will go. And then the town pays for that ride. So I want to go over real quick the Federal Transit Administration requirements. I've already mentioned the three-quarter mile. This is what the map looks like. The blue is the mandated area and everything in yellow is what we currently offer, but it is not mandated. And this is when you overlay the riders. We have over, slightly over 1,000 ADA-certified riders right now. What's important to note is we only have 517 active. So there's a latent demand of almost 49% of ADA-certified riders that could start using the system at any time. And that's really hard. It makes this type of service very hard to predict. It makes the cost very hard to predict. And right now, 71% of the active riders are falling outside of the mandated area. I want to, I want to touch on one more thing I forgot to mention on this one, is we will still offer ride choice town ride. So the riders who are impacted by paratransit service or could be impacted if we were to scale back our service area would still have ride choice as an available option. And there's a few different scenarios that we will, we can go through in more detail on a future date. But if the rider can get into the paratransit service area through ride choice, they can make a transfer to go further. With the new pilot program that we're doing, they could take the ride choice the further distance. So there's all kinds of different alternatives they will have. It's just a matter of a lot of education, a lot of trip planning. We've learned a lot from Mesa who just went through this and they worked individually with the impacted riders to make sure that they could get from their homes to their churches to their, to their doctors. It just might not be the same as it was for them before. But offering ride choice citywide is still a great service to offer to them. So our ask tonight is to look at initiating a change to pull back our paratransit service area to the federally mandated area. Valley Metro is very supportive of this. We've been working closely with their staff. And we've put together kind of a tentative schedule of what that would look like based on what Mesa's done, what Maricopa County has done. And it would involve a series of community open houses that Valley Metro would help us host. And we'd be coming back to the Valley Metro Board and to council next spring. Summer 2020, we would do that really one-on-one work with the riders. And then the service area change would go into effect October 2020. This timeline is kind of guided by Valley Metro. They have set service changes in April and October and they're trying to align any major changes with those dates. And this, on the right, is just showing that Chandler would be basically the last city offering, the citywide after us. Mesa has changed, Maricopa County has changed. So Chandler and us are the last, Phoenix does all parts of Phoenix, south of Jomax. So they have a little piece that's different. But this is kind of the trend. We've heard informally that Chandler may be interested in looking because they're paying attention to what we're doing right now too. And so the request is to get direction from staff to proceed with initiating this change to our paratransit service area.
Mayor, Nikki, can you go back to your map page? The one that showed all the riders? So today, we approved Queen Creek getting their, starting their process for their information. So it's very possible that Queen Creek can be providing transit. So that Power Road boundary could potentially change for us too. And we'd be providing three-quarters of a mile from Power Road and hitting, it looks like, you know, potentially quite a few riders down that Power Road line, down all the way to Hunt Highway if possible, depending on where Queen Creek decides to bring transit into their community.
Yes.
Yeah. They've got a seat at the table now at Valley Metro. Mayor Barney is there representing Queen Creek. So as we're cutting back, we could actually be adding again with Queen Creek coming online and bringing that forward.
So do you have like a, what the next map could look like if we were to scale back? Is there, is, is that it there?
Yes. It would just be the blue area is the mandated area.
The mandate. And when you said Mesa was scaling back, is there a picture of Mesa as a, because when you, what I heard you say is that riders in Mesa, if they're no longer in their, we'll call it, coverage, they would just move into Gilbert to get that?
Yes, Mayor Daniels and council, yes, that is, that's currently the case now. So even, we currently have Queen Creek residents, county resident, anybody currently can come into our, any paratransit service area. So, but, but we are, we will be impacted by, Mesa has changed their boundaries and there are parts of our city where they were previously in an area and now they will be closer to our area. And the same will be true of when we scale ours back, our residents will go to Chandler if that's the closer area.
Okay.
All right, that puts us in a position to essentially give staff a head nod if we're ready to proceed forward. I think the lengthy timeframe actually is very helpful, especially for our residents who may be impacted directly by this. And I especially appreciate the desire that we have to work one-on-one with any of those residents who may be needing additional assistance with this, with these changes. So thank you for doing that. And I know that that will be a really important step for us to understand this all the way through.
And Mayor, I think when we talked about this at our retreat, you actually have had the most experience with this in the past over any of us on this dais the last time it was discussed. And I think there's a lot of things that have changed with paratransit, with the ride choice. There's a lot of options for our riders out there into the future and actually, I think, better options for them. Ride choice that they don't have to schedule. Ride choice that they don't have to schedule ahead of time, that they can call like an Uber or Lyft, which makes more sense for them, I think, in a lot of instances. So I think it's a different situation. We've moved forward with transportation, and probably time to make that choice.
Thank you. I saw some head nods. I think we're ready to proceed and move forward. So thank you, and Kyle and Nicole, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
And to Bridgette for sitting through lots of Valley Metro meetings.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank Nicole especially for sending us this presentation ahead of time. Councilmember Taylor and I just mentioned, too, that we had both appreciated the opportunity to read it ahead of time before we got here tonight, so thank you.
Of course. Well, being last on the agenda with that much data, I just wanted, I didn't want to throw it all at you.
All right. That moves us to agenda item 36, our boards, commission, and committee reports. Are there any from the council?
Yes, Mayor, for the parks, this Saturday, what was a dream is now going to be a wonderful reality. We have our ribbon-cutting of our South Regional Park, 8:30 Saturday morning, bring all your kids and families. I mean, we have t-shirts.
Maybe just pick your favorite kid, because it's going to be really crowded.
Get there early.
But we're excited.
Get there early. But again, what a wonderful day in Gilbert to have that for folks in the southern part of our community to have the beginning of a fantastic vision. So anyways, I just want to share that with the community, this Saturday, 8:30, get there early, and then Saturday night.
I was going to say, and it's open all day, so don't feel like you have to be there right at 8:30. We're encouraging people to maybe come at a different time, too, also.
And I think we can throw water balloons at you or something like that. Or maybe a Patrick. Maybe you throw water balloons at Patrick. I mean, I'm going to be taking shots at him.
That's known as assault.
Vice Mayor, to piggyback on that, we attended an employee event last night, and I stood in the middle of the tot water splash pad and just watched the kids have an amazing time. And the park looked beautiful from the second we got there in the light with all of the scenery around it to it getting dark and all the lights coming on and all the color that's there. So I did a ribbon-cutting in an autism spectrum therapies group today and talked to them about the fact that this park was opening and how beneficial it might be for some of their members, too. It's just, you're right, it's a great time to be in Gilbert. And Mayor Daniels did a live shot there this morning and spun around on the thing. If you didn't see that on Fox 10, she spun around on the thing.
I'm still feeling the effects of that, actually, so thanks for pointing that out. Any other boards, commissions, and committee reports? Terrific. I do have one future meeting item that I'd like to bring forward for our next council meeting, and that is the creation of a citizens' transportation task force that would be advisory in nature only. There's a lot of transportation projects that we've got to work through over the next year. I anticipate that this task force would be in place for just one year to allow us some citizen input on some of these major projects. I know that we've gotten a lot of emails lately from our residents concerned about traffic and traffic patterns, and I'd like to offer them a voice, an advisory voice, as we move forward and start discussing future projects. So if that is, I've got three signatures, so for those that didn't see it yet, it's coming on the 17th anyway, but I wanted to add that to the discussion today. Report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I didn't have three items until Councilman Peterson stole my thunder about the employee event last night at Gilbert Regional Park. I'll just add to that, I want to thank Robert Carmona, our Parks Director, and the Parks Team, as well as the members of fire and the exact team who helped cook. We had an employee event last night, and it was wonderful to see all of our employees and their families and children there, having a great time. At a new park, it is absolutely beautiful. Can't wait to have it open to the public. I also want to thank Larry Taylor for the work he did on the Building Codes Committee. That's an arduous process, and it sounds like we've come up with a great outcome to that. So we'll look forward to those getting adopted. And also, let you know that Larry Taylor celebrated 25 years of service to the town of Gilbert on September 6 of this year. He's promised us 15 more years, Larry? 20? And then lastly, I want to thank Nicole and Kyle for the work on the Gilbert paratransit service. That's a very important issue and a very complicated issue, and I appreciate them bringing that forward and giving us some clear direction on where we need to go. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Report from council on current events? Councilmember Taylor, and then Councilmember Anderson.
Mayor, you know that this is Constitution Week all across the U.S., and we love to brag that we're the best at celebrating that. We always have been with the biggest celebrations. And I'm a little bit bummed because on Saturday, I've been booked to teach a class for a long time, and I just can't get out of it. So I wish the ribbon-cutting well, and know that I'm going to get there as soon as possible. And I also, that night, we have our Constitution event, the celebration. It's at 6:30, the Higley Arts Center, a beautiful facility. So after you go to the park and those wonderful events, head on over for another great event full of music and patriotism and celebrating some of the wonderful things that we have in our town. Mayor, thank you.
Empty in front of him.
Elder statement needs to go. Go ahead. Age before beauty.
Great. They just pick on me all the time.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. I just wanted to recognize Vice Mayor Cook and I had the opportunity to attend Sunday, a fantastic event that demonstrated again the diversity in our community. We attended the consecration of the Assyrian Church of the East this past Sunday, and it was such a significant event, they didn't have just local leaders, they brought their patriarch from Baghdad, Iraq, to do the consecration of this church. And they had people that were attending from all over the valley and from states adjoining Arizona just to come and see the patriarch. It was a very significant and a very humbling event to witness, and I appreciate that.
I just wanted to hop in and say, our Gilbert Wellness Program is so awesome, and the Gilbert, Town of Gilbert Four Wheelers Club did a trip to Cottonwood this past weekend with a permitted ride of Casner Mountain. And the camaraderie that we have in this group and the people that come together that wouldn't typically get to work together on a regular basis, but now know each other because of this group, it is amazing. And to tell you that one of our, Vanessa do, she works on our valves, whatever that means, she works on our valves. She found a little boy a couple weeks ago wandering the streets, and a police officer rolls up to the scene, and they know each other from being in this four-wheel-drive club together. So they have this connection. They would never have probably met otherwise before that, but when they got there, they already knew each other. And I just wanted to point out that we had people from so many different departments that are part of this group, and it is just such a great thing. I hate four-wheeling, but I love these people. And I just wanted to share that with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our council meeting this evening, and thank you all for participating and for all of the work that our staff does. Have a great night.